Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education. Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the January 22, 2019 work session. Ms. Anthony, please call the roll.
Board Member McKissick. Board Member Orgul. Board Member Woods. Board Member Love. Board Member McCormick. Board Member Bibbs. Board Member Coleman. Board Chair Avant.
Present.
You have six board members present.
We have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The question is now on the approval of the agenda, and this is for Dr. Ray. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to add one item, chem treatment, mechanical systems, water testing and treatment And I want to remove several items. 7.4, interactive flat panels. 7.14, Gibson HVAC. 7.11, steamer request for federal equipment. And item 7.30, new school naming.
Board Members, are there any other items? Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to add under 8.0, so it should essentially be 8.1 is charter policy for first reading.
Okay. Can we make that addition, please? There being no other amendments to the agenda, roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick. Board Member Orgul. Board Member Love. Board Member Bibbs. Board Member Coleman. Board Chair Avant.
Aye.
You have six votes in the affirmative.
The agenda is approved. So I'd like to now do the Chairman's Report. I wanted to first take a moment and welcome our interim Superintendent, Mr. Dr. Ray, to his first board meeting. We're so thrilled and excited to have him.
Thank you.
I see Dr. Ray has a lot of support in the audience, which lets us know that we are very excited about having him and his leadership to move us forward. We thank you all for coming out to support Dr. Ray. I think it means a lot to see familiar faces in the audience as you get before this body. It's not an easy thing, and so we appreciate all of our stakeholders coming out to support us in moving forward with the district. I also wanted to make sure that people are aware, we are in the process, the board is in the process of negotiations with Dr. Ray for his interim contract. And wanted to make sure that the public is aware that now that the board members have been able to give feedback to our board attorney, we will be presenting a draft to Dr. Ray, and he will have time to review that with his attorney, and we hope to get this wrapped up pretty soon to make sure that we're all on track and moving forward. I also wanted to let folks know that board members will be receiving a poll to schedule time within the next week and a half to discuss further the superintendent search. The board has made clear that they want to move forward with the national search, and so we, as a board, will need to discuss and affirm a timeline that we can then share with the public in making sure that everyone is aware, and we're pretty transparent about the process moving forward. I also wanted to make sure that folks are aware that Teresa Jones, who has been on this board since 2000, Billy, how long was Teresa?
We've been on since 2011.
Since 2011, has resigned her position as the board because she's now Judge Teresa Jones. And so we're very excited about having an advocate in Judge Jones. And so as a result of that, we will be having an appointment ceremony that the county commission will be leading. I want to thank Commissioner Wayley, who's also in the audience. He's the Chair of Education. He is very supportive of our efforts in the district, and we appreciate Commissioner Wayley and his partnership with the district. So at the time forthcoming, at a time forthcoming, we will be, the county commission will be accepting applications for Teresa's position. And with that, with the accepting of those positions, the county commission will then make a decision about an appointment. That appointment will last until the next election year, which will be 2020, just so folks are clear. We're down to eight members, but soon to be back to nine. I also wanted to mention that I saw in the audience, Mr. Burgess. We'd love to have our elected officials come and participate and always be a advocate for, on behalf of SES, and we know that we have that in Commissioner Burgess. So now I will turn it over to the Superintendent for his report. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Orgul.
I didn't turn it on. You're doing such a good job as Chair. I wanted to thank you. Welcome, Dr. Ray. And I want to say the principal of White Station here is David Mansfield, and I know our assessor's here, Melvin Butch Burgess is back there, and he's collecting our taxes, making sure we get taxes the trustee collects so that we can spend money on our students. But Mr. Mansfield's birthday is tomorrow, and I just wanted to wish him a happy birthday. And this is his pre-birthday celebration, and Ms. McKissick wanted me to say something because it would curry favor for her children over at White Station, so it was...
You are such a great school board member, acknowledging your principles, Mr. Orgul. Now we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening. This week is a very special week, School Board Appreciation Week. Yes, round of applause. Shelby County Schools is joining other school districts across the state in saluting our local education leaders during Tennessee's annual School Board Appreciation Week from January 20 through the 26, 2019. We recognize the contributions made by all school board members. Our school system is the backbone of our community, and these men and women devote countless hours to making sure our schools are helping each and every child. Our deepest appreciation is extended to the dedicated men and women who make it possible for local citizens to participate in education. We salute the public servants of Shelby County School Board who are leading by example, giving countless hours of their time so our children can have the very best education we can offer. Here's a special video we've made to show our gratitude and appreciation.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for all your support, for all the great things you do for Shelby County Schools and the children of Shelby County, and just encourage you to keep moving, keep it moving, keep it going good, and we'll support you as you support us.
From Central High School, we love our school board.
Thank you to the school board for all you do. We really appreciate the work you do for our children.
Thank you, school board, for everything you do.
I want to sincerely thank the best school board in the United States of America. Thank you for always supporting us. Thank you for always having our back.
SES school board, swag.
So I just want to say thank you to our school board for representing our community all the time, diligence, and input that you give from the community is so important for us in our daily work. So I just want to say thank you. It can be a thankless job, but we really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, school board.
Because of you, we can live in a safe and productive environment.
Thanks for all you do for Shelby County Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelby County School Board members, thanks for believing in us.
We appreciate your service and dedication.
Thank you, Shelby County School Board.
Awesome, awesome. Board Members, Shelby County Commissioner Michael Wayley, District 5, has joined us to present you with a special proclamation. Commissioner Wayley.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ray. I also want to quickly introduce a colleague of mine, Dr. Cedric Gray, who's our Director of Education for Shelby County. If you've not had a chance to meet with him, he's another really big advocate for our school system here, and you'll see him a lot over the coming months and years ahead. So as Dr. Ray said, this is arguably the most exciting week of the year, School Board Appreciation Week. And so on behalf of the Shelby County Commission, we're excited to present a resolution for you here tonight, which I will read from this nicely framed version of it. So it says, "Whereas the Shelby County Board, School Board of Education, works closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students; and whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the success of Shelby County's communities and to the economic development of the state; and whereas school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communication, the needs of the district, for communicating the needs of the district to the public and the public's expectations to the district; and whereas school board members strive to ensure that every student graduates high school prepared for a career and/or college; and whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to be competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and ever-changing world; and whereas the men and women of our local school board are elected by the people to make decisions most appropriate for their communities and deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to the public education in Tennessee; and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, that we do hereby recognize, honor, and respect the Shelby County Board of Education for their unwavering commitment and dedication to serve the community." Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Please join us by saying thank you to our school board members during the Tennessee School Board Appreciation Week.
Commissioner Wayley, we appreciate you coming down to recognize us, and so I'm going to ask board members to come forward if we could take a picture real quick.
Sure. Yeah.
Board Members, we'll be sure to put that into our board office so that all can be able to revel in its adulation of board members. So I also want to make sure for the record that we notate that Board Member McCormick is present. Superintendent?
Chair Avant and the board. Good evening, public. Good evening. All right, guys, I can't sit behind a podium and present. It's not my style. I'm a lifelong Mi'islican, and I love Shelby County Schools and the children of this school district. So tonight, I want to talk to you about my 90-day entry plan. So of course you know about Destination 2025, 80, 90, 100, and the priorities of strengthening early literacy, improving secondary readiness, develop teachers, leaders, and central office, expanding high-quality options, and mobilize family and community partners. This is the vision, to ensure Destination 2025 remains the primary driver of academic achievement, to create a system that provides equity for all students, to provide all school-based staff with the resources needed to best serve students, to ensure all team members operate with the following: a belief that all students can achieve, a sense of collaboration, teamwork, and integrity, a sense of empowerment, commitment to the work, and drive for innovation. So as I reflect and visited numerous amount of schools and talked to community members, both mayors, these are the guiding questions. How close are we to, how close are we to reaching Destination 2025? What long- and short-term challenges must be addressed ultimately to reach our vision? How can we ensure SES and its stakeholders are engaged in a common path forward? Guiding questions. So, the seven next steps towards Destination 2025. As I said earlier, I'm a lifelong Mi'islican, graduate from Whitehaven High School, but also attended John P. Freeman in the ninth grade. So I asked some of the students for John P. Freeman to come and help me tonight. I can't do this alone. Come on in. Come on in, students. So they're going to tell you the next steps toward Destination 2025.
Academic Equity and Action Plan.
Social, so, social-emotional learning.
Culture Building.
Create servant, servant leadership.
Alignment of Resources.
Footprint Proposal.
District Office Transition.
Let's give it up for the students at John P. Freeman. Thank you, guys, so much. I appreciate you. I missed number five.
Alignment Resources.
All right. Awesome, awesome. So let's talk about Academic Equity and Action Plan. You heard Dr. Burke the other night go over academic equity and action, and this get at the core of what we're trying to do. It's four key levers: revering educational policies and practices, early literacy, promoting natural development of skills to promote literacy, high schools. How are we going to improve high school learning? Core instruction: focusing on the strategies, curriculum, and materials supporting our students and teachers. This is some of the data. We improved from T-VOS 1 to T-VOS 2. Let's celebrate the small wins. Let's bid, right? 58% of our schools earn T-VOS 3 or above. In a course math, we increased by 2%. Asian and white students average a 3 or above on the AP exams. Now, graduation. We're on target, 79%. That's our goal, 79%. We're on a mark to reaching 80. We're on our way. College readiness. This is an aha moment. Only 23% of the class of 2018 score a 21 or higher on the ACT. As you know, 21 is a, is an indicator of college readiness. We've got some work to do. 7% of elementary schools and middle, 51% of middle schools earn a T-VOS Level 3 or 38% of high schools earn a T-VOS Level 3 or above. This shows that we need to have a laser focus, K-12, but especially high schools. These are our next steps. This is what we're committed to doing. We're going to finalize the academic and equity plan, and also the 90-day plan, have to get educator and community input. That's so important and so valuable to enrich our plan. Improve AP and honors teacher training at each high school. We have to train our teachers. We have to develop the bench, if you will. Restructure I-zone to provide more support to all SES priority schools. We have so many schools coming out of the I-zone. How many do we have, Dr. Burke, leaving the I-zone? 13 schools leaving the I-zone. That means they've improved. However, we need to put safety nets in place for them. So we wanted to create a continuous improvement zone for school, for schools exiting the I-zone. Introduce ACT predictor exam, targeted support, facilitate hiring of adjunct teachers for intercourse at selected schools, recruit high school teachers in hard-to-staff areas. We got to recruit. We got to go deep. We got to find teachers for our students. Fund an additional ELA and math coach at each high school. We got to put the support in our high school. And establish phonics program K-2, as well as supporting in second grade with a teacher assistant. I charge the academic team. Every child needs to be reading at or above grade level by third grade. That is critical for us to improve. That is critical. And we're going to be bold in the work. We will be bold in the work. Social-emotional learning, priority number two. Prioritize social-emotional health will help students excel. Develop a trauma response school district. So everyone will be trained from board members, cabinet, schools, parents, because we need to know, we have to know. Support for variety needs, including adverse childhood experiences, which we call ACES. Research confirms, confirms benefits of students with strong social-emotional health. This is why we're doing this. 25% of children, 25% of children attended school, they've been exposed to some type of traumatic experience. 25%. We have 112,300 students. If you look across our district portfolio, and what the number indicates, that we almost have 30,000 students, 30,000 that's impacted by ACES. 30,000. And it's real. And I remember being a teacher. Students coming to class hungry, being abused physically, emotionally, haven't seen their parents. It's reality. Dr. Whitelaw and I was traveling and visiting schools. We saw a young lady at Sonic, and she had an Algebra II book studying and writing, and we were alarmed. We said, "Why would you do homework at Sonic?" So as educators, we got out and said, "Hey, how are you? Tell me your name." Young lady told us her name, told us the school, and we said, "Well, why are you doing your homework at Sonic?" Now, you know Sonic. You have car hops, folks skating, and getting orders, and ordering, and cars zooming in, zooming out, exhaust in the air. This young lady told us, "I'd rather study at Sonic than to study at home because I can't." And she started to tell us all of the problems existed in her own. This is real. This is reality. And childhood trauma, if it's not addressed, we will never be able to move the needle So we've learned through ACES training, trauma response effectiveness, this is what it'll yield, improve classroom climate, increase attendance. How many students fail to come to school? And we learn this, looking at the data, because they don't have the basic necessities at home in order to come to school. Or if it's cold outside, they don't have a coat. I see Principal Mansfield nodding because he understands. Reduce suspensions, decrease office referrals, regulate social-emotional skills, but most important, improve classroom climate. You have to have the right climate for learning. If you're a teacher, or you've been a teacher, you understand the plight of our students. This is real. This is what we want to do. Identify and implement professional development for all staff, all staff, and school board members, focus on adverse childhood experiences. Fund additional counselors to better support our schools to deal with social-emotional learning. Develop an information and awareness campaign to help school community increase its knowledge about this issue, because this is real, and we have to address it. We can't shy away from it. Culture building. This is one where talking to our teachers... at home in order to come to school. Or if it's cold outside, they don't have a coat. I see Principal Mansfield nodding, cause he understands. Reduce suspensions, decrease office referrals, regulate social emotional skills, but most important, improve classroom climate. You have to have the right climate for learning. If you're a teacher, or you've been a teacher, you understand the plight of our students. This is real. This is what we wanna do. Identify and implement professional development for all staff, all staff. And, and school board members, focus on adverse childhood experiences. Fund additional counselors to better support our schools to deal with social emotional learning. Develop an information and awareness campaign to help school community increase its knowledge about this issue, cause this is real. And we have to address it, we can't shy away from it. Culture building, this is one where talking to our teachers and our principals, this is another big one. So, we have to include students and teacher voice, we have to listen. We have to engage the community. They have to trust us. That's why parents sometimes go to the news, cause they don't trust us. And we have to ensure that central office has dedicated committees with teachers as contributing members. The days are gone, say, yeah, we had a, we met with teachers. Well, how many teachers did you meet with before making a decision? Oh, four, five was on the committee, no. We have to engage our teachers, we have to engage our students. We have to change the culture. A wise man once said, culture eats strategy for lunch, maybe breakfast and dinner, right? Next steps, develop and implement communication protocols between the school board and the district. Host teacher feedback sessions throughout the district. Conduct meetings with teacher advisory boards, principal advisory boards, student advisory boards. My first meeting I held today was with both teacher unions. That was strategic, because I wanted to hear from them. I wanted them to know that we, we're in this work together. Engage school-based staff and support teams to garner input and build trust. We have to build trust. If you work for Shelby County Schools, we're on the same team. Whether you're a teacher, principal, or in the central office, we're on the same team. That's so important. Servant leadership, here again, build trust with our stakeholders, parents and students. Improve community awareness. Refocus our roles within central office. If you see organizational charts, you'll see superintendent at the top, then it cascades downward. But our organizational chart, well, the superintendent is at the bottom. Our students at the top, that is so important. Servant leadership, district office, we're here to support schools. We're here to support schools. So, we're gonna conduct servant leadership training district-wide, beginning with central office. We're gonna lead and model. My dad, uh, he's eighty-eight years old, and he taught me the difference between being smart and being wise. And when my dad, he tells me to be quick to listen. And he often talks about being a servant leader, leading by example. And if you're in our central office, or you're a principal, this is the expectation. Lead by example. We cannot hold students to a higher standard than we hold ourselves. That is so important, alright? Alignment of resources. Programming to mean student needs, this is what it's about. Our students, that's where the dollars need to go to our students. Utilize resources effectively and efficiently. We had a budget conversation today in cabinet. And try to prioritize our resources so it will not impact the classroom. Restructure our resources to meet the school's unique needs. It's about us supporting schools. Redesign our school systems to create conditions for all schools to succeed. Conditions for all schools to succeed. How are we gonna do that? We're gonna review financial projections, resource allocation, resource allocation and budget collaboration with cabinet. We started some of that today. We're gonna have a mini retreat Thursday. Been working with, uh, our deputy superintendent Lynn Johnson to empower our school's leadership teams to better understand school-based budgeting. We're trying to put the resources and give our principals the opportunity and the autonomy to design what's best for children within their building. Equip central office to help schools better align resources, develop a balanced budget for school board and county commission approval. Mr. Waiter, we're gonna need your help, we would need you. Let's talk about this, the elephant in the room, footprint proposal. Out from Whitehaven to Westwood to Frazier and everywhere in between Hickory Hill. In restaurants, Christmas time, sitting at the table, holiday time, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, this was the hot button. Footprint proposal. Let's talk about it. We want to ensure quality of learning environments, improve academic programming, and maximizing building utilization. At the end of the day, we're gonna lead through academics. The academic programming will lead us. So, let me be clear for the general public, no decision has been made. The board has not voted on one proposal, not one item has been proposed to the board to vote on. We want to engage and listen to the community. But let's talk about the facts, let's talk about the data. We have seventeen more thousand more seats than needed, half a billion dollars worth of, worth of deferred maintenance, fifty schools below optimal student enrollment, forty-one schools with poor or low quality facility rate. Sixty-nine percent of our schools, they have over one million dollars in maintenance needs. I know, cause I still get the calls. When the air is out, heat's not working properly, flooding in the building, roof, ceiling tile falling. We got three thousand twenty-five students currently attending at school outside of their community, that's some of the rezoning. But again, to be very transparent, we're gonna listen to the community and the public. I think the board has already stated that we're going to listen to the community, teachers, and our parents. So, again, the proposal, develop a stakeholder engagement plan. Organize task force education, elected official business and community leaders in Shelby County, County to thoroughly review the plan. Organize a task force of S E S educators to identify academic implications to each proposed move. Academics will lead the way. Last but not least, district office transition. As you know, some months back, we bought a new Shelby County Schools headquarters on Jackson. And we want to improve efficiency and create stronger opportunities for collaboration. We want to hear from the public of how we're going to create energy and excitement around the new headquarters. Transform work environment to one that stimulates creativity and innovation. And we want to create a more warm, welcoming place for all staff and students. These are the, these are the possibilities. Create a one-stop and welcoming location for visitors. Increase support of minority vendors. Coordinate effective feedback from all stakeholders. Establish a health and wellness wing, provide meeting space for staff, parents, and students. Now, I know there's some angst within central office. Because when you've been in a building, for some folks been in this building for almost thirty years. However, we want to engage you, we want to listen to you. We're not gonna do anything to disrupt. We want you a part of this process. So, we're gonna develop staff and community engagement plan to determine how we can take an innovative approach to enhance the features of the building. We want to hear from you, we want you to be a part of it. And I want this new Shelby County Schools headquarters to uplift that North Memphis community. Engage community and business, develop rebranding plan for central office. So, again, these are the seven next steps to Destination 2025. And tonight, we have the opportunity to do something great. We believe. We believe in our students. We believe in our parents. We believe in our principals. And most of all, we believe in our teachers who's trusted with our most precious resource every day. And that's the students of Shelby County Schools. Thank you all, and this is the leadership pledge. We will put the best interest of students first. Actively listen and be transparent in our decision-making process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ray. We appreciate that you have already hit the ground running. And obviously, in providing us, the board and the community with a ninety-day plan, um, you have provided some good feedback on direction that you are planning to take us during this time. And we appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation, so thank you. Ms. Love?
This is the time to ask questions, feedback. So, thank you, Dr. Ray, for your, can you hear me? Thank you, Dr. Ray, for your presentation. As you were presenting, I was asking, I was actually taking notes. You can't hear? I just asked, now? Okay. Thank you. So, I'm not gonna ask all the questions, I'll send some of it, uh, in email. So, I hope somebody out there is taking notes. I do want to know, when you presented the slide on social and emotional learning, I want to know, um, how are we actually going to enforce the social and emotional learning? Is that gonna be tied to a curriculum, um, or learning in the classroom? So, uh, to teach children how to manage their emotions and feelings? Um, and you may not have the answer now, but that is something that I'm interested in. Because if this is something that we're gonna do, I think it needs to be tied to the curriculum and it needs to be practiced every day.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Uh, this is hard work, but it's heart work. And Dr. Higgrave and her team, uh, they've been through extensive training. Uh, I'm very confident in their ability to lay out our plan going forward. But this is work that we must do and we must accomplish now. So, uh, look forward, within the next couple of weeks, a plan of action uh, as we move forward with our social emotional work. Also, the team visited a school district, I want to say Columbus, Ohio, or maybe Cincinnati. Cleveland, alright, I was in Ohio, right? Uh, Cleveland, and they have a social emotional learning curriculum. So, I know we're looking at, uh, this particular curriculum, uh, but that's, you know, what we're trying to do is to tailor it to the students of Shelby County.
So, I guess for me, I would like to know, how are our, uh, behavioral specialists, counselors, mental health, um, how are all of, how, how, how are all of them tied into this? Because I understand that you have somebody doing their work, uh, but we also need to make sure that we have, uh, people who not only know and understand the work, but, uh, who have a background in helping, you know, we, we have social emotional learning. And like I said, I understand you have a team doing that. Uh, but I'm more interested in, once we address the issue, then what? Because we, we know our children have the challenges, but what happens after we recognize the challenge? How do we make sure that that child is receiving the support that he or she needs? And that somebody is checking in with whoever's supposed to be providing those services to ensure that there's not a gap, uh, once we refer a child or once we recommend a child to receive some type of service?
Great question, Ms. Love. Uh, let me say this, you're saying go beyond acceptance to deal with the root cause and then what's the follow-up? So, we'll have that in the plan.
And two more things, um, when we begin to talk about social emotional learning and A C S and all of the challenges that our children have, um, I think it's imperative that we look at who's actually supposed to be doing the work. That goes for district employees, school employees, um, service providers, uh, you know, programs that we, we give contracts to, but we don't know what they're doing. We don't have any data. I think we need a, a comprehensive accountability metric for all of our partners to ensure that they're providing the services that we need. And I don't think that accountability metric can be done by a district chief or a department manager. I think we need to look at somebody who specializes in this, so we can make sure we're gonna return our investment. And final thing, being that you're new, I know that you have, well, you're, you're new to this position, but you've been in the district. I think it would be wise, um, and I'm gonna, you know, even put this out to the board members, we actually need an audit to see what we have, what we don't have, um, before you even begin to start trying to put things in place. Um, because I want to make sure, as a board member, I know we're coming up to budget. I want to know what everybody's doing, what's the capacity? Uh, do we need to add or do we need to replace? Uh, because this plan is a great plan, but if you don't know what you're working with from beginning to end, all of this is just good on paper. But when it comes time to implement and there are gaps in place, uh, because you don't know exactly what's going on, um, you know, I'm gonna trust your judgment. But I'm just suggesting that we do a, uh, that we make sure that there is an audit done to ensure that you know exactly what's going on, um, cause like I said, budget is coming. I know, you know, you're asking for a lot, and I just want to make sure that as a board member, I'm supporting the work, uh, but also as a superintendent, you need to know what's exactly going on.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Uh, this is an area that I used to directly supervise. So, um, I'm very much in tune, uh, with the, the skill set, uh, the will. Um, however, I will definitely take in consideration, um, things you said to ensure that, uh, we have students, uh, receiving the type of training that they need to receive.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So, Superintendent, thank you very much for your, um, plan and your presentation. And, um, I would just, building off of what we did last week in academic performance, and we talked about academic equity in action, and which was an outstanding presentation, by the way. I do want to put that on the record, uh, for those who are able to see.
Yep, Dr. Burke did excellent job.
Burke and, um, you coming in as well. Um, one of the things that I think regarding that presentation in which you've just said around academic equity and action plan, I'm looking forward for us to be able to use this as an opportunity to do a true equity audit. Because the reality of it, with some of the findings that Dr. Burke and you reported last week, this is an opportunity for us to really have a strong conversation about what true equity looks like. I think a lot of people get caught into equity being, um, diversity of people per se, but the reality of it is, is diversity of the types of people you may have in a school building or if you have the right matches in the building. You know, does the, uh, teaching staff mirror the actual kids in the building, those types of things? So, um, number one is definitely something I'm very interested in and looking forward to us being able to put that work out there.
Thank you, Ms. Bibbs.
Ms. McKissick?
Dr. Ray, thank you so much for that presentation. Very enlightening. I'm curious, you mentioned several times over about the level of engagement that you want from everyone. How is that process going to take place? And when do you think it might start in terms of engaging faculty, you know, teachers, and the community as a whole? Do you have, I know it's just at the beginning, but do you have any sort of timeline of how people can get involved? Because you know there's going to be, now that you put it out there.
Oh, yeah.
Folks are going to want to know.
So, I know that Ms. Powers, along with Dr. Phillips, they're working together to roll out how we're going to engage our parents and all stakeholders. But what I've tried to do, even walking in Costco and Kroger and different churches, is really listen. And it used to take me ten minutes, or fifteen minutes to walk through Costco, now it takes me an hour and fifteen minutes. Because we really want to hear from parents, and to try to get folks engaged in the process. So, I know Ms. Powers and also Dr. Phillips are working together to have us a tight timeline.
So, Dr. Ray, just to piggyback on Board Member Love's point about just the accountability piece, I do think that it will be important for us to track how the social-emotional development of our children is really impacting kids in the classroom. So, it would be helpful for us to have a metric that at least allows us to say, has attendance increased? Has disruptive behaviors decreased? In layman's terms, when we talk about this investment in social-emotional, we actually want to see what the return on that investment is. And so, I think it's important for the public to know our goals that we're trying to achieve with this investment in social-emotional, that we're actually trying to improve parent participation, we're trying to improve attendance at school, we're trying to decrease tardiness, all of those things that we need to have, kind of, as where we are at our starting point, and hopefully where we want to end, you know, increasing positive behaviors in children year over year.
Will do, Madam Chair.
So, I... Ms. Love?
I know it's my second time. So, I do have a question as it relates to high schools, Dr. Ray. I know, we all know that high schools, they need the most support. What I would challenge you and your team on is going back, looking at, you know, just taking some students' data from kindergarten up to high school. And see if you can identify where that gap started. Because, you know, I know when we say high schools need the most support, unfortunately, when our children get in high school, they're almost at the end. So, if we can begin to address some of those gaps, we'll see where the gaps are, and I guarantee you that you'll find out that they're in the elementary school. But one more question about the, I want to know, and you can send it to me, how the social-emotional learning will tie into ACEs? And then I would also like to know, I know that there's a lot of work that you want to do around this, but I would be interested in your plan of how we're actually going to address it. How we're actually going to address it, and I would like to, I would like to know how, since you stated that a lot of these departments were already under you, I would like to know how everybody is working together to address those challenges. And I would just challenge you to make sure that, since we're going through the budget, that, you know, make sure you're asking for what you need versus, you know, being lenient. Because we know we have a lot of children with a lot of challenges.
Right.
But we need to make sure that we're addressing that during the budget season.
Yes, ma'am.
And before we move on to action items, I also just wanted to recognize that our former superintendent, Dr. Carol Johnson, is also in the audience, and we appreciate all of the support you're providing to Dr. Ray during his tenure.
A mentor, I love her to death.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to staff action items, seven point one, new leaders priority schools.
Sorry, we're going to move KPIs to next week's board. Tonight, I knew I was going to be too long, yeah. So, we're going to move KPIs to... And Dr. Bird's presentation, who's going to address some of the fault lines in the KPIs, you'll see next week.
Alright, thank you. Seven point one, new leaders priority schools.
Seven point one is part of priority schools process. Going to work with ten schools, IODs and teachers, priority school grant for priority schools.
Is this a state grant, Dr. Bird?
Yes, correct. So, this is part of the state's district priority grant over a three-year period, to where the state provides funding specifically for priority schools. So, this will be with ten schools, our most challenging high schools and middle schools. They have been on the priority list for, on three different priority lists, and it'll be working with the IOT teams inside those different schools.
And is this just a result of the presentation you did in the spring, when that list came out, about each school's categorization categorized in the priority list?
Yes, so, July of 2017, the state now only funds schools that's deemed priority. So, based on the three tracks, Alpha, Beta, Delta. So, this is basically a part of that, and the funding has to go strictly for those schools.
Okay. Ms. Love?
It says on here that the schools will receive intensive support around diagnostic needs assessment. Tell me more about the needs assess assessment.
Dr. Bird?
Yep, so, the needs assessment looks at the pillars in regard to school turnaround. So, when you think of strong leadership, culture, and climate system operations, aligned staff, and personal leadership. And so, based on the diagnostic, individual SWOT analysis for each school is developed, and that's where new leaders will push in and work with the IOT team members around those particular levers or areas of focus.
So, this doesn't address the community needs? Because the children come from the community? In order to get the children where they need to be, we have to address those needs?
Yep, so, within the grant, it's very specific around levers that has to be addressed. So, this grant calls for RTI, chronic absenteeism, building leadership capacity, and teacher capacity. So, this is the one to address the chronic absenteeism inside the school, leadership gaps, teacher gaps, in the RTI framework.
Well, I'm hoping we, as a district, can add another assessment.
Seven point two, ClearView Consulting.
ClearView Consulting to support HR hiring and vetting of candidates, schools going into the I-zone.
Seven point three, Charter School Revocation Gateway University.
Well, I know the board will propose a hearing prior to the meeting next week, hopefully around Gateway. We will implement process for grade auditing by the end of this semester.
And so, have we sent out a poll to board members about a possible date for the hearing?
No, we're going to...
I'm sorry, I was looking at Board Member Bibbs, because I know she was...
No, we actually have not sent a poll, but according to the email exchange between Dr. Ray and I and other board members, it was easiest to do it the set time that's before the board meeting. So, we can do a poll regarding timing of that day.
Okay. Alright, moving on to seven point five.
Mythics. Oracle University to allow the team full access to materials needed for the ERP implementation. We previously spent forty-five thousand already, that's why we had to bring the item to the board.
So, this additional cost puts it's over a hundred?
Additional cost put it over a hundred thousand. Yes, ma'am. And we just wanted to be transparent.
Seven point six, District-Wide Student Perception Survey Panorama Education.
As you know, teachers must have five percent of their eval from student perception. We conducted IRP and surveyed teachers, and committee-included teachers and union reps. Students provided feedback on the survey, and this looks very similar, but the challenge was, what we do with the data once it, once the results come back? So, I think this has a limited PD two with trap hot.
And I do remember this item coming...
Limited PD with trap hot, I'm sorry.
This item came back through procurement, because we wanted to make sure that students gave feedback. So, I think we've done our due diligence and all that, okay. Seven point seven, 2018-19, third quarter, February through May, 2019, produce direct to schools.
All I know is, it's locally grown.
Alright, seven point eight, 2018-2019, third quarter, February through May, 2019, produce FFVP.
Same thing, it's locally grown.
Alright, seven point nine, third quarter, February through May, 2019, produce locally, local preference.
Locally grown.
Alright, seven point two-one-zero, warehouse pallet wrecking system.
This is a wrecking system for dry food.
Yeah, at the new CNC campus, building number seven, to prepare for dry storage.
So, Dr. Ray and Chief Phelan, are the funds for this coming out of our general funds, or are we using some of the CNC reserve funds?
CNC is funding this particular item.
Okay.
So, we've gone through with finance, and any items that we're spending, we determined if the CNC can fund or not, and presented that to the board a few months ago, when you approved the five point five million for Phase One. So, we're on track with that.
Alright, seven point one-two, Gibson Mechanic Dunbar ES HVAC change order.
Install gas regulators and unit startup board needs for operations for Dunbar Elementary.
It's a contract change order to increase the gas pressure, so it's a change amendment to the contract.
So, the amount is just because it's now with the change order over a hundred thousand?
No, the prior contract was over a hundred, so this is a change order amending a contract, so it had to come back to the board for approval. You'll see several of these on the agenda tonight. So, in starting up the systems, we had to do a change request, because the gas pressure wasn't great enough, so we had to put in a new gas regulator.
Mr. Oracle?
Are there four, are there four of these for the exact same thing?
Yes.
Was this related to what happened to White Station High School? The Birthday Boys School? You remember that we started up, and there was no heat? And, but was that cleaning out, that was cleaning out the pipes?
Oh, that was a chemical treatment, water treatment.
Because there was rust in the pipes.
Yeah, this is more from our last year's capital program, starting up the new systems. And, you know, for these change orders, the gas pressure wasn't great enough, so we had to replace a gas regulator, and that's why we have to do a change order.
So, when we changed out their boilers, I think?
Yep.
When we changed out the boilers, we didn't, that wasn't part of the RFP, was to change out the gas regulator, we thought that was okay?
I think that the spec of those gas regulators wasn't high enough to create as much pressure as we needed, so we had to do a change order to put the right gas regulator in.
So, as we're changing out future boilers, whoever's doing our design?
Right.
Maybe we need to tell them to look at the regulators.
Exactly.
That'll save us valuable board time.
Right.
But anyway, thanks. So, it was the same problem four times?
Yes.
Thanks.
So, Chief Phelan, was this an assessment that was done at the beginning of the school year?
Assessment?
You're saying that the pressure change, when did you determine?
Oh, so, so, the design for the, these are for capital programs from last year. So, when we're starting up those new systems, then we're trying to make them operate, and they wouldn't operate properly, because the gas pressure wasn't high enough. And so, then we go into a fixed mode, and this change order is to put the right gas regulator in there, and that's what the change is for.
Okay, so, let me ask a question a different way.
Okay.
Did you determine this at the beginning of the school year? Because obviously, when the systems, when you started the system, when did you determine that you had to make this particular change?
Sure, this occurred when we were starting the boilers up a couple of, well, about a month ago. And we considered this an emergency, and directed the contractor to proceed with adding the gas regulator. So, yes, we did not delay starting the boilers up, because of the need to start the equipment, so that the schools would be warm.
So, to Mr. Oracle's point, if there's only four change orders on this particular, as items, I'm worried about all the other schools. So, if you're saying it's only four schools that you had to do this particular change order, are you saying that the other schools are not here, because they're not on the capital list, or that they don't need that same treatment?
Board Chair, event, we had funds in the contingency on the other projects that were affected by the need to add the gas regulator.
Are there other schools?
What I meant was, this is new construction, replacement of boilers, and so, they were interfacing with the old regulator, I think is what Ms. Phelan was saying. And, and Ms. Butler was saying, so I think, when they took the new boiler, and then they plugged it in, the pressure wasn't high enough, so it was just something on the design that they didn't do, they thought they were going to reuse the old regulator, and they couldn't reuse the old regulator. So, on the four schools that I think are here, four, four or five? Four or five, they all needed new regulators, because of the interaction with the new boiler. So, it wasn't all two hundred schools, it was just where they got new boilers.
And there were only four schools that had new boilers?
No, there were, I think, an additional three. However, there were funds in the contingency that allowed us to move forward with getting the regulators added, without affecting the contract amount.
Ms. Love?
So, were all of these schools done at the same time?
Pretty much, they were all required to be ready to start the boilers in time for the changeover to the cold season.
Okay, so, let me ask you this. Once your team determines that a boiler needs to be changed out, or a new boiler or HVAC, so who determines the plan of action? Do you assess the problem and say, we need a new boiler? And then we do an RFP for a contractor? They go out and assess the work and say, this is what needs to take place, A, B, C, and D, this is how much it's going to cost? Or do, is the district just telling them what needs to be done, and then they do it?
Yes, once the location and the project is identified by staff, we contract with an architect or an engineer for the design of that particular work. The designs moving forward are including any ancillary components associated with new equipment, that will ensure that we include these components moving forward.
So, when they installed the, when they installed, what was it, HVAC boiler? They didn't check to make sure that everything was operating, once it was installed?
The engineer did not include that component in the design, but when the mechanical contractor went to start the boiler up, it's at that point that they tested the regulator and determined that it was not adequate. So, there is a check, at the time, at the point that the boiler is started.
So, I hope we put something in place to ensure that once the work is completed, either someone from the district goes to ensure that whatever we paid contractors to do, that the work is fully completed.
So, Ms. Love, the design architect missed the regulator in their spec. And then, when the installers went to install it, that's when the system wouldn't run properly. So, we will ensure that when we're doing design, gas regulators need to be something that our A and E's look at when they're doing these systems, so.
And who paid the design? You said the design regulator?
Yeah, the design architects make the design. And then, we bid that out, and then a installer or, you know, manufacturer comes in to build that stuff and put it in. And so, they didn't, the architects didn't call that out. When the implementers came to install the equipment, it wouldn't, like Mr. Oracle was saying, it wouldn't run, you know, properly, so that's why we had to put in a new regulator. So, we'll make sure our architects are looking at the regulators and the pressure.
Seven point one three Gibson mechanical HVAC change order for Tresman High School, I'm assuming similar, the same?
Yes, similar.
Yep.
And I wanna say seven point one four and seven point one five.
Right.
Uh, seven point one four, we, we pulled, okay. Seven point one five Gibson mechanical change order for Raleigh Egypt HVAC.
Yep.
Is that the last, it's just those three? Chief Phelan, it's just the three?
Yes, and one we had to pull, I think we're bringing back um next month, and then we've got seven seventeen is also the same.
Seven sixteen Otaka Technologies Network cabling contract amendment.
Uh, this will support restoration of the CNC and transition of the CNC warehouse operation um to the New Shelby County Schools headquarters.
So is this new cabling for the Bayer Building?
This is an amendment to the existing Otika contract to compensate for the new CNC campus. Yes.
Uh, okay, seeing no other lights, seven point seventeen, it's again what we just discussed, Gibson mechanical change order for Melrose HVAC.
Yes.
Seven point one eight Nixon General Contractors White Haven renovation.
Uh, well, this will increase the cover renovations include the original project scope, uh deferred due to expenditures uh for the emergency purchase of a chiller.
Is, is this including the renovation of the locker room?
Ms. Phelan.
Is this different?
Um, it's got lighting, flooring, any, does anyone know if it's got the locker room, it's part of the scope? Okay, yes, it does. Yes.
Yes, it includes the locker room?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the folks in my district are gonna be really happy because this has been very, 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 very long overdue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, no doubt, I know about that.
Uh, seven point one nine East High School, school renovations?
Uh, classroom and interior renovations at E High, at East High School.
Seeing no lights, uh, Dr. Ray, is this part um, part and parcel of the presentation that we, uh, our former superintendent provided? In renovations to East High School, there was, is this part of that, or is it something completely different?
Beth?
I'm, I don't recall the presentation, but these are, I believe these are the renovation elements that we've been talking about for a while for east. I think we're just getting around to doing them.
Well, we can do, Madam Chair, double check and uh we'll, we'll respond back to you.
Okay, because there was a cost to what the overall renovation of both the outside and inside, and so if we were talking about that in phases?
Yeah.
If this is part of that, I think just making sure that the board is aware, maybe not.
I think the presentation that he was making was about the outside campus, and that this is renovations inside the building is part of our home high school renovation program.
Yeah, you're talking about the athletic facility?
I think it's different.
But I thought there was some interior to that? No?
I'll, we'll have to pull the presentation, I'm not familiar.
Double check Madam Chair, we'll respond back to you.
Thank you. Seven point two zero Bounds and Gallipsie AE Services.
Uh, replace the roof infrastructure at the following schools, White Station Elementary, Jackson Elementary, and Alton Elementary.
Seven point two one Evans Taylor Foster Children's Architects.
Uh, that's the addition at Macon Hall Elementary School. For fourteen classrooms.
And is this just the running list of architects? I know we have a list of folks.
Yes.
Um, and how do we make decisions about additional architects being added to that list?
So refreshing the list, I think we are gonna, how old is the list, a couple of years? Do we have a plan to refresh the list, when? Okay, so the list was created about two years ago, and it looks like we're in a refreshing mode, so we're gonna go out and refresh the list in the next couple of months, in the next few months.
And on the current list of architects, how many minority architects are on that list? Or percentage?
Madam Chair, can we, can we get back with you?
And so, Mr. Orgul, if this is something that in your facilities committee, I know that you've brought this up, you know, a number of times about the list of architects? So if this is just, I'm gonna add it as a to-do on your list, if that's possible?
So, and we did talk about the facilities, is, they have a list, and they, people, I call it an application, but they respond to an RFP that you do every, how many years?
Yeah, it's two years old, and we were just talking about, we're in the refresh phase now, so in the next month or two, we'll be refreshing the list.
But it's not a exclusive list, it's a pretty inclusive list. You, you just have to submit that you wanna be on it, and then um, I guess it's like court cases, uh, Ms. Irvin, that they roll from the next judge to the next judge to the next judge, and, and I hope, staff, that we go just down the list, and somebody gets lucky and gets a school, somebody gets an HVAC system, the next one gets a parking lot, but it just rolls down the list like that, is that correct? So that, it's a, is it alphabetical? Or is it just random? Okay, so that's, and, and I don't see the same names coming up every week, so I, I assume that's the way you're doing it.
That is, I think.
But if we can reach out, if there are other minor, I see, I was just looking, I see two minority firms that I know of, and I, I can't, I, I know they're uh, uh, I don't know if they're women owned, I know they're minority owned, but I, I don't, I, I just can view the ones we're looking at here and.
Yeah, there's several tonight.
I think you do a good job with that.
It's just again, a check and balance to make sure that we are actively recruiting?
Yes.
Um, that there's an opportunity for all types of firms, whether they're smaller or bigger, or minority, to be able to participate in this process. So if we're doing the refresh?
Yes.
Just a point of action.
We'll keep you updated on it.
I didn't point out, but I, the, the mechanical contractor for four or five of those schools?
Gibson, yep.
Is a, is a large African-American owned contractor, and um, I don't know if you noticed it when we were up above, I did, I just didn't say anything, but I will now. Um, the pallet racking seven dot ten is uh A and B, is that right? A, I think it was, they're a, a minority contractor that was doing about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the work at um CNC. So that, I think if you go down that list, uh, Bounds and Gillespie, I believe, is that correct? Um, I saw Self Tucker on there, they're fine.
Yep, Self Tucker too.
It's on there, so, and they're on there twice. So anyway. Always do better.
Ms. Love?
Yeah, so when we um, build the new classrooms uh or space for our schools, are we making sure those classrooms are Twenty First Century classrooms?
So I think that um, we are in conversations with maybe finance and other departments on the budget for furniture and technology and things like that. So I think that, you know, Lynn will probably help us work through some of those challenges in terms of can we fund Twenty First Century style things for inside the building? Chief, is that accurate? Okay.
So it's more programmatic in focus, uh, Dr. Montes, Dr. Whitelaw, and Burge's team usually work with Lynn around that. Um, so it's a cross-functional uh responsibility to um outfit these classrooms.
So just to piggyback on Ms. Love's question, we, we have a template now, obviously with our new Goodlett School, that's a Twenty First Century school. So even if it's, you know, part or parcel of how we can implement that in new classrooms, uh, you know, it's just a challenge to the district that we should be thinking in that way. We do have a template that we can at least go by now with our new schools.
Thank you, Paul will take it.
Seven point two one Evans Taylor Fo- oh, I did that one, I'm sorry. Seven point two two Clark and Associates Incorporated.
Fourteen classroom additions at Germantown Elementary.
Seven point two three Hayeslip Studio PLLC A and E Services.
Uh, eight classrooms, uh, addition, Newberry Elementary.
Seven point two four John Pruitt Architects A and E Services.
Six classrooms, uh, Jackson Elementary School.
Ms., uh, Chief Phelan, um, could you give us just a, um, or you can send back to us what the um student enrollment is at the schools where we're putting the additional classrooms?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seven point two six Self Tucker Architects? I missed two five. Seven point two five Allen and Hoshell A, A and E Services.
Uh, design construction documents to replace roof infrastructure uh at Lawrence K eight and Barrett's Chapel K eight.
Seven point two six Self Tucker Architects Incorporated.
Twelve classroom addition at Kingsbury Elementary School.
Mr. Orgul.
So I sent a note, Ms. Anthony, to you, I don't know if you distributed it to Ms. Phelan. At Grahamwood, we, and I, I think we spoke about this, we just completed an addition, and the building um is not connected to the main building, the wing. And we talked about this the other day, I think it was you and I, or did Ms. Stewart and I, yeah, Michelle and I talked about this. So, uh, on this addition right here at Kingsbury, I don't, we hadn't been designed yet, so I don't know if it's connected like a wing to the, the school. But if it's not, and there's a, a little portico chair or whatever, there's a walkway, we need to have fencing along that so that someone from the outside doesn't come into the school or into that, and so that if a child, I know we have restrooms, unlike our portables that we were getting rid of in a lot of places, the child has to go into the building, get called to the office, which I frequently was as a student, they, you don't want them walking outside where someone can come up to them. So where we've done this and we've approved it, it's an oversight, and we haven't done fencing, I would like to see, we could talk about it facilities, us come back and make sure we have some kind of secure fencing that's attractive. Uh, so we don't have to escort children places, and also that we don't have to worry about someone um coming onto the school property where their children present. So I wanna make sure on this Kingsbury addition, if it's not connected, that we take care of that, and that we go back and look at uh Richland, Grahamwood, Wellstation, I think those are three that I can think of that have had additions. And there's another one, there's another couple that have had additions.
Delano.
Delano, and make sure that um, that we've got a secure path if it's not connected to the main building.
Okay.
But the buildings look good, and uh, that was it.
Seven point two seven Self Tucker Architects.
Uh, White Station High School uh renovation project.
Seven point two eight Safety and Security Three M Window Film.
Uh, Safety and Security Three M Window Film from Solar Tech.
Alright, seven point two.
Nine.
Seven point two nine Stan the Covert Security Solutions.
Uh, the completion of the alarm system in the new Shelby County Schools headquarters.
Seven point three one Resolution Amending the Shelby County Board of Education's fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget.
Yes, uh Lynn Johnson.
Perfect, so we, we're amending um our general fund, and we're also amending our special revenue fund. We're increasing our general fund by two point one million dollars. So first of all, just to give you some of the movement within our general fund, we're doing a um, a realignment within our general funds. Our charter school uh enrollment was actually lower than what we had budgeted. It was originally budgeted at sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety students. The, as of October, which is when we do our true-up, it was fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-two. So almost a eighteen hundred student um, lower, eighteen hundred student lower than what we had budgeted. With that in mind, we're using that funding in a number of ways, some of the funding in a number of ways. One, in terms of incentives for our reward schools. We're also um dealing with some of the preventative capital maintenance that we have, and there's one point six for that. I can't say it's sufficient, but it's, it's a start as we address that. Um, and then also our um summer learning academy as well. The second part of the, the primary reason for the increase in the general fund is actually related to the priority school grant. Um, there's about two, two million in terms of carryover funds that the state allowed us to, to receive to provide additional support for our priority schools. So this is a, a state grant, and this is, those funds are going towards that. The second relates to our um special revenue fund. This is a fund where we receive donations or revenue generated um activities, and there's three that I wanna highlight. One is our Verizon Innovation Award, and that grant is increasing by seventeen thousand. We're also increasing the adopt a school seminar by three thousand, and then school uniforms by twenty-four hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Seeing no questions, seven point three two Elementary Literacy Lab School.
We were supposed to pull seven point three and seven point three three. I was told that it wasn't on the consent agenda.
So I'm, I moved seven point three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Seven point three two, uh, Elementary Literacy Lab, we need to remove from the agenda.
So do we, did we, did we mention that one?
It's chem treatment.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think the chem treatment we were supposed to add to the agenda, I'm sorry.
The chem treatment is still on?
Chem treatment is still on.
Okay, I'm sorry, so we're updated on our screen, I'm, I'm looking at the paper, so I apologize. So seven point three two is the chem treat, mechanical, systems, water testing and treatment. Okay.
And this is for waste testing and treatment.
So um, just parliamentary, the two that were, that were pulled, which was seven point three two, the Elementary Literacy Lab, and then the seven point three three. They're on our, they're on our. Yes. Okay, so. So tell me how, just, is it okay for us to pull those items now? Okay, so I wanna make sure from this body that it's okay for us to pull seven point three two, uh, which is the Elementary Literacy Lab, and then seven point three three University Middle School, if there's no objection. Seeing no objections, those items have been pulled. We just need to state it for the record, I know that what, what board members are seeing is something different, but if, for the listing public, I wanna make sure that we are clear in our parliamentary rules. Seven point, um, so now we're moving on to eight point one proposed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, chem treat, um, that's for water testing and treatment.
Okay. Alright, eight point one, which is proposed policies, first reading? All right, eight point one, which is proposed policies, first reading.
Ms. Maria Stewart. Can't hear you.
Board Member Superintendent Ray, we have one policy before you tonight with a minor revision. That's policy number twenty-ten SES Minority, Women in Sm- Women in Small Business Enterprise.
Ms., Ms. Stewart, can you come a little closer to the mic?
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. Um, we have one policy before you tonight with a recommended revision and that's policy number twenty-ten. That's our MWBE policy. Um, the only revision that we are recommending is located in the first sentence of the policy statement where we reference disadvantaged owners. The recommendation is to change the word disadvantaged to small businesses to be consistent with the remainder of the policy.
Eight point two is the charter school policy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, actually, Ms. McKinney is going to give us a high level, um, overview of this twenty-one page document. I do want to state for the listening public and be on record around that this particular draft has been a public document since November. So it is actually uploaded into Board Docs for all, um, community people who want to take a look at it, who want to be able to ask questions about it. Uh, feel free to email me directly if you do have those questions, because I do want to make it clear that when we're doing a policy of this magnitude, it is an open public document. Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members, Chair Avent and Superintendent Ray. Um, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present this comprehensive charter school policy. First, let me give you a little context. If you all remember about a year and a half ago or two years ago, this was a charge that the Board, um, through the Charter Compact, uh, created a Charter Advisory Committee to make recommendations around a policy. And as a result, there were recommendations that were made and then incorporated into a comprehensive policy. So as Board Member Bibbs indicated, this is a pretty, it is a comprehensive policy and it includes not only the recommenda- incorporating some of the Charter Advisory Committee recommendations, but also incorporates the law and incorporates some of the, um, Tennessee, um, State Board of Education policy and regulations. Essentially, it is to guide the district around its relationship in terms of collaboration and strategic alliances and, um, governing authorization and revocation, renewal, closing and, um, other items that are, um, um, relevant to the charter school poli- charter schools. So essentially you have the purpose, mission and vision, which essentially sets out the same, uh, the same relationship, what the relationship will be. And, um, it, it sort of, it, it tracks the Charter Compact. The scope of this is around thirteen areas and I'm just going to name those areas and, and keep it moving and give you some high level. But authorizing, charter agreements, performance standards, expansions, modifications, replication, review and reporting requirements, interim and other periodic reviews, renewals, revocation, closure procedure, shared service agreements, facilities use and purchase, charter partnership council, policy implementation, monitoring and review, and of course responsibilities for carrying out and implementing the policy. Just quickly, under your commitment to quality authorizing, again, the state, um, Board Policy indicates that every district has to adopt the quality authorizing standards that are, um, provided in the, um, policy six one, six point one 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 for the state Board Policy. And that is, um, referenced in your policy. Some of the, and it sets forth the evaluation criteria as well that you, that the Board would, um, use in authorizing. And just quickly, one of the things that we have added, um, as a, in a joint effort, um, through collaboration and discussion is a added, um, an added criteria of the, um, needs, aligning the needs, assess, aligning your needs of the district by using the Educational Priorities Document rubric. And essentially this is where it provides clarity for anyone seeking to apply for a charter school about the, um, the strategic, um, plan of the district and the needs of the district and aligning, um, giving a charter school an opportunity to align whatever their curriculum is with the needs of the district. So in addition to that, um, there is clearly stated that substantial fiscal impact to the district shall be considered by the district and provided to the Board. There is also, um, doc, you have, um, about conversions, you deal with the three ways of conversions. There's setting forth charter school performance standards. And again, this is a performance accountability framework where there are core components around the, the, um, student performance framework, operational scorecard and the financial scorecard. Those are the things that guide any, um, evaluation of charter schools through their renewal. They have their five year renewal and they also have their ten-year, um, renewal period as well. That, let me correct that, five-year review period. We also go into, um, replication, expansion and modification, again, using your performance framework that is set forth in the policy as well. Then it's very clearly set forth on the charter renewal processes where you provide the criteria. There is also the criteria around non-renewal and what that means in terms of a recommendation for closure. Then there is the revocation where giving you the circumstances in which you can revoke a charter for, a charter. That is, um, three ways, or three categories of ways. There's the priority schools where you have automatic revocation. Then there's, there are certain reasons for discretionary revocation that are set forth and then voluntary closure and charter termination. Then there is a clear closure procedure provided in the policy where there gets very deep, a very, um, clear and clear processes around notice, around providing a school closing impact report, around a charter school closure hearing and also a timeline that the Board follows that is in alignment with state law. Additionally, there is a shared service agreement section that talks about the three types of shared services agreements, which includes no fee shared service, fee for service and compliance service. Then there is a section on facilities use and purchase where there's criteria that are set forth in the policy that governs facility use and purchase. And there are four criteria that are outlined in the policy. Then there is a process that, um, the Superintendent responsible for, for determining, um, recommendations around facility use, purchase requests and recommendations. Then there are facility use categories. There's the no cost lease use, which is again based on the strengths of those criteria that are set forth in the policy. There's a lease or lease purchase category for use and then there's purchase. And then finally, there is the Charter Part- Partnership Council, which is essentially, um, the, an extension of the, um, Charter Advisory Committee through the Board and, um, um, indicating or appointing people to serve on an advisory committee that will serve pretty much the same function as your Charter Advisory Committee, which is to provide, advise and provide feedback around many of the areas that the CAC took, um, reviewed and provide feedback and input in.
Thank you, Ms. McKinney.
You're welcome.
Uh, just point of clarity, there is a one, uh, hole on page fifteen of twenty that needs to be filled in. And Ms. McKinney, if you could just speak on the school closing impact report, is that something that should be done annually?
That's only around if there's a recommendation for a school closing.
Yes, so should that be an annual report if there is a school closing in any school year?
That is, it's, it's, it's very, it's singular to that particular closing. So if it's an individual school, then it's, it's much like the closing procedure, it's aligned with the current closing procedure that you all have in your policy.
Okay. Miss Love?
So a couple of clarifying questions. Um, I do want to thank Board Member Bibbs and all those involved, um, through this long process. Um, so question, um, Mr. Leon, Chief Leon. I know that per the charter school application, there are certain guidelines that we have to follow or certain questions that we have to ask per, per the state.
That's right.
Okay. So, um, is there any section of the charter school application where we're able to put certain expectations in the charter school application?
We can put in supplemental, uh, requested information that charter schools would then, or charter school applicants would then have to put in their application, yes.
Okay, so, uh, I do want to challenge the Board, because I know I've stated this several times, there are, yes, it's related to the charter school, uh, policy. Mm-hmm. Um, once this policy, uh, is approved, um, I do want to challenge us to go back and look at the charter school application, because I know every year when it comes time to either vote or deny charter schools, I ask the same questions over and over and over again. So I just want to challenge us as a Board, um, well, McKissick is gone, but, uh, Board Member Bibbs is over academics, that we take the time, um, now to look over that charter school application and if there are certain guidelines that we feel we need in place, uh, to make sure that we're protecting our students, I think that conversation needs to happen sooner than later.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so, um, Miss Love, thank you so much for your comments. I think you are actually at the point of where I wanted you guys to be, uh, for the past three months. But this is the point of it being, well, right, but this is the point of where we are with the first reading. So this is an opportunity for that to put it first foremost, uh, front of mind where when we're really looking at this, to be able to do those add-ons. And I will readily admit that those are some of the things that I was pushing for around, uh, clear clarification around, um, several number of these. But I think hearing your feedback again, and thank you for General Counsel for her work on this. But this is also to reiterate some of those conversations that I had with her around where we are as a Board, that we really want to be clear around certain things and not being so loose because we find ourselves in situations that we shouldn't be in if we're clearing policy. So let's use this time between now and, um, over the next two weeks, I will send out an additional email. So then we can, uh, come back together with General Counsel and Ms. McKinney so we can find out those points that we need to, uh, narrow in on. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, thank you, Ms. McKinney. So, what, is it eight point three? Yes, eight point three Resolution Approving SES Board Strategic Fund allocations. Um, just for the listening public, this would be allocations for Cherokee Elementary, Dunbar Elementary, Bruce Elementary, Newberry Elementary. Or, Board Member Orgul?
Uh, Jeanette, was the, the allocation for Newberry under Ms. McKissick or somebody else?
Under Ms. McKissick.
She wants us to change it, so we're going to change it to the proper Board Member and then you guys will receive the updated copy of the resolution with the other resolution, the other items that you guys have approved this week before next week's meeting. So when we post the agenda, you guys will have the updated resolution.
Um, also, I had one for White Station Elementary.
It is on there, mm-hmm.
Is it? I didn't.
It's on, it's on the updated version.
Gotcha, so we'll see that next week?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
Okay. Okay, uh, so I'm going to turn it back over to Superintendent Ray, who has a few comments to make.
Thank you so much. Uh, I just want to thank the Board and I really appreciate the vote of confidence. Um, we have an awesome team and I love all the Cabinet members, they work so hard and, and they're so dedicated to the students of Shelby County. But I'll be remiss if I didn't thank, um, three principals. I know Randy Scott Howard, uh, she left early, John P. Freeman, the students who helped me during the, um, presentation this evening. But also Ms. Jordan, uh, Melita Jordan Thomas, the Principal of, uh, Alice and Parenting, and Ms. Janay Scott Robinson, who's the Principal of, uh, Gardenview Elementary School. So I just want to thank them. Uh, raise your hands, yeah, we already recognize Mr. Mansfield, want to thank them because they work so hard on daily basis. But also, just a few more people. Uh, I see one of my former students here, uh, a young man that I'm so proud of, uh, who taught for a number of years and now he's Assistant Principal at Kirby Middle School where I was Assistant Principal years ago. Stand up, Chris, Chris Newsom, I appreciate you, Chris. And also I see a former parent, um, of mine. Uh, just indulge me, guys, I, I, I really appreciate it. Uh, former parent of mine, um, her son passed away last year, uh, but she's still so dedicated and, and she is, she's been dedicated, I know, to schools and giving herself, uh, all day, every day. That's Ms. Muriel Dotson. Uh, stand up, Ms. Dotson. Uh, she's the PT, OPTA President at Kirby High School. Uh, she's always been, uh, you know, very supportive and, and just, uh, loves children uh, in the Hickory Hill neighborhood. Also, I see Ms. Cox, who's, who's a parent of parents, she's always out and very supportive. Uh, but again, I'd just like to thank the Board Members for this opportunity and, uh, we really roll up our sleeves and work. I just want to say thank you to everyone.
So, uh, before we adjourn, we just want to say to a job well done, Dr. Ray. We know it's not easy to step into this position, um, with as much grace as you have. So job well done and meeting adjourned.
Thank you.